Okay, we're forcing game five. I didn't get it. You've got such divided loyalties.
Oh, let me just tell me.
We're gonna have to press. You know, this is kind of. Change things.
Oh, yeah.
Just come.
We suffered a little, so. It's not as nice, just I would have liked to.
Less grants are better. So it's good.
Yeah.
Well, I mean. If, because you're, you usually seem to be the one that gets the most communication from the public. Yes. Uh, if you're recently. Use your app. Test right now, so, uh, just let them know that. They have to get the recording later. Because I have no way to fix anything. All my computers tied up now. Yeah. Okay. The thing is.
It should be a short meeting.
Well, it's looking good earlier, so I think it's okay, but.
Yeah.
Happens, so, anyway. I don't know. It looks like we're going to have a lot of audience participation tonight.
Wow.
Hi there, great. Yeah.
Next, Cedar.
Answer this.
Yes.
Hello. Hey, Tom, let's go.
Take requests for the big car.
Um.
Okay, it's a good. Yeah.
Hey, everybody. Um, let's get started. It's six o'clock. I'd like to call to order the regular council session on October eighth at six P M. Mayor Stock has asked me to chair the meeting today as she's attending via Zoom along with Councillors Kozloski and Spagman. Um, just a note to the folks listening online, R T I internet service has been down, so we are running on a backup Starlink account, but everything appears to be working correctly. If anybody's having any issues with YouTube, we weren't able to test that. So you may have to go back and look at the session recorded later. And thanks to everybody that's here in person, everybody that's online, and to those who may be viewing this as a recorded session later. So our first, uh, call to order is audience participation. This is to allow public comments on items that are not part of tonight's agenda. There will be time to comment on the agenda items as we move through the meeting. Any comments that are coming through as audience participation are limited to three minutes. This is a time for council to listen to those comments. But generally, we do not discuss or respond to the comments given tonight. Any responses to comments would be considered in a future council meeting. So Nancy, did anyone sign up? To speak to.
Yes. First one is Jenna Barnett to come up and have a seat. Well.
If I forgot one thing. What it goes on.
She's the one that I'm confused over too.
This area. There you go.
Alright. Hello, my name is Jenna Barnett, and um, I have been part of the Classic Ridge Cluster E B C N B since um, I moved to Cherry Street in twenty twenty one. Currently, I'm serving as co-chair of the Classic Ridge Cluster of E B C N B, and I'm speaking on behalf of our cluster. We request permission to place a small movable storage shed for our neighborhood preparedness emergency supplies on public land. We're asking to put a structure that is not permanent on the right-of-way easement that connects Greenridge Street and Elm Street. Uh. It, it wouldn't need to be permanent. We can purchase something like a tough shed that could be moved if necessary, and certainly the configuration would not in any way impair pedestrian traffic on this trail. Classic Ridge Cluster has many emergency preparedness supplies that were both donated by E B C N B and also purchased through fundraising. These supplies are labeled, highly organized, and currently in a garage that needs to be vacated. We urgently need storage space for our emergency supplies. If cluster is willing to obtain the structure and set it up, no cost to the city, we just need a place to put it. I understand that the city manager, Public Works, and the city emergency manager are working on a plan. I've been hearing this for, for where to put these structures. I've been hearing this for a couple of years that they're working on a plan. But our need is acute. We require a place to put our many thousands of dollars worth of supplies, medical supplies. I anticipate if there's a disaster, we might even be trading some of our extra medical supplies with other clusters because we are very well-stocked. We did a lot of fundraising. So, um, Classic Ridge Cluster has a vision that if there is a disaster, our emergency stockpile will be adequate to meet the needs of our neighbors. It'll be organized for effortless retrieval and be very accessible. But our need is now. And so we are requesting permission to put our emergency depot on the right-of-way easement that connects Elm Street and Greenridge. Thank you for your consideration of this matter.
Thank you for your comments, Jenna, and thank you for your involvement with E B C N B and emergency preparedness.
Um, I, I just thought of one thing. Can you give us? I heard you can do it tonight, but maybe in writing or something, some kind of a timeframe when you'll respond so that we can plan accordingly.
For what?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your.
Mark Caster.
Sir, I live here in Manzanita. Tonight, I'm talking on behalf of the Tillamook Housing Commission. Uh, I had been at the council meeting in August and talked a bit about the housing commission, uh, what's going on, and I want to give an update of what's happening this fall. That might be relevant to Manzanita and North County. Um. Each year, the housing commission has about four hundred thousand dollars uh, in money to give as grants for affordable workforce housing. Our grant cycle is going to start next week. So if there are developers, homeowners out there in this room who have a, an idea to build affordable or workforce housing, and they want a little money, by all means, contact us. Um, there's a a vetting process, and uh, we're happy to help. So that's October. The, this year, another source of funding we have is the moderate, um. Does it moderate, um, sorry. My glasses aren't working. It's moderate income revolving loan or Mural. Uh, this is uh, state, state money. And is, um. It's, it's sort of aimed more at, um, new housing for residential and maybe conversion uh, from some other use to residential. And there again, the application process is somewhat involved, but uh, our housing coordinator, Parker Salmon, is available to help people learn what your projects fit into that money and how to guide you through it. And finally, a new one this year is of the EPA funding that had been granted a couple of years ago to Oregon and then to Tillamook County has come through, and the housing commission through Parker Salmon's again is coordinating the, um, with a D E Q to uh, get this money to developers in as expeditious a manner as they can. These are loans, and um, the general idea is to produce energy efficient housing, and so if you have some projects that are specific to energy efficiency, there's uh, money being available through the county through the state and the feds to help you with your project, and these are going online, as it were, this fall. Um. And I guess that's about it. Oh, and the Mural, the moderate income revolving loan is, has one of the aspects of it, is that three? Is um, that it has to be a project that you can't get done without some extra funding, and that's where Mural comes in. Thank you.
Uh, question mark. Um, all three of these sources you mentioned, the grants tomorrow and the EPA, those are available for individuals, businesses, or developers?
To apply. Anyone, so long as you fulfill the requirements, like our housing fund, you have to be doing at least three units or more.
Um. You need the qualification.
Yes, and the state and federal ones are, I've read through, are rather complicated, so it kind of they cover a variety of possibilities and what your, the income level you are aiming at for the residences impacts again.
If you could just remind everybody, I know you mentioned Parker. Is that who anyone that's interested should contact?
Yes, Parker Salmon's is the housing coordinator for um, Tillamook County um, in the community development office. He is available, uh, the website, both for Tillamook County, the Tillamook Housing Commission has him there, and um, by phone, email, text, he's, he's all over and would be the person to contact. Um, then he can introduce folks to the next stage of the process.
Good. Thanks for the update, Mark.
Yes.
It's Mark. Mark Adamson?
Yeah.
Well, I'm Mark Adamson. I'm a local resident as well as member of the comprehensive plan advisory steering committee, which is only coincidental in why I'm here because at the last community summit, we were beginning to discuss um, the comprehensive plan goal six for air, water, and land quality. Uh, and one of the points from the existing comprehensive plan that came up during the presentation uh, was the, the following. The only source of noise pollution in the Manzanita area at the present time is U S Highway one oh one. The city encourages the Oregon Department of Transportation to maintain tree buffers along the right-of-way to reduce the noise impacts on adjacent properties. And uh, that triggered a uh, memory of mine that uh, in our neighborhood, there at uh, between Division and Epo Ocean and North, there is, um, so there's, we're affected by a gap in the tree buffer along U S one oh one. Um, and we, we suffer through, um, you know, excessive road noise during the day and the occasional truck with hydraulic braking at night. Um. And I first learned of this, this gap when I moved to town, um, a couple of years ago, but this gap was caused by the tornado. So it's right at the end of tornadoes pass, right before uh, Highway one oh one, and having connected that, bringing it back to this point in uh, the comprehensive plan, I was here to ask and, and maybe request whatever the, whatever the definition of encourages is. If we could invoke that policy somehow, and maybe get some new trees planted or something with the assistance of O dot. Anyways, I don't know. I don't know from square one how to do it, but uh, I figured that uh, first step was to come to council and raise it as a comment. So.
Good. It's, we can follow up with their dot. What do you want? We can do. Yeah. Okay. Can't see anybody else in the audience?
Nobody else has signed up, and there is nobody on.
Nobody on. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda, uh, items are not discussed during the meeting. They're approved in one big motion. Any council member may remove an item or separate it if they see something that needs to be corrected or have any comments. So with this motion, we're going to be approving, or we'll see if we're going to be approving the approval of the minutes from our September third council regular session, our September tenth council work session. And we're also going to be approving the bills that were included in the packet. Council, is there any comments or changes before we move forward?
No.
Catherine, Linda, Jerry, any comments, anything that needs addressing or changed? Very good. So I will now ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That's so moved.
Okay. First, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Linda. Uh, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion has been passed unanimously. Thank you, council. Now, we're going to move on to the city manager report. So Leila, take your.
Thank you very much. Uh, just a few updates. So we had a comprehensive plan town hall meeting here a couple of weeks ago, was really pretty well attended. We had a full house, um, focusing on natural resources and goals seventeen and eighteen, which relate to the beaches and ocean shore and dunes from the conservation and develop participated in that, so it's, it's a useful thing to watch if you're interested, and we would really like to get your feedback as well. So fill out a survey. The survey closes, um, on Friday at five P M. So please do that. Um. We will be kicking off the planning commission appointment process soon, so those applications are so to get us processed. And then finally, just want to let folks know, I know it's only October and people are already putting up Christmas lights. Our tree lighting, just to get it out there ahead of time, is December fifth. So we'll get more information out there in the cool poster and all that stuff soon. Oh, yeah.
So, thank you. I have count.
Leila. Trick or treating. It's all gonna be and down La Nita, uh, essentially after school, that's out. Is that?
Businesses organize that, but I'll, I'll circle in with Carolyn, but I'm pretty sure that is happening. Does anybody know?
It might be nice to get some information out. It might be nice to get some information out so everybody knows. I'm gonna bring the kids.
Linda. Jerry, any comments, anything to ask Leila about her report? Excavation. Um, this is a change order resolution to amend the contract. And I will that over to Leila to give us a little more information about what she's requesting.
Thanks. Yeah. So, um, so yes, so this is us to have a change have with advanced excavation. Advance was selected through a competitive R F P process to do the classic street connection project. Um, actually, the list that happened, um. The twenty second city council.